Good evening, everyone. I want to call the meeting to order. This is the Select Board Meeting of August 27th, 2018. We are being reported by CCTV. Jane Hotchkiss, Select Board Member, is not present tonight. She told me about 5:30, saying that she was ill and unable to make it. But we do have a consent agenda. We also do have a quorum, so that's important. The consent agenda through town accounting warrants, minutes, gift acceptance of White Pond Associates, Inc. The minutes were of June 4th. White Pond Associates, Inc., $2,000 to the White Pond Management Plan gift account, and Sunday entertainment licenses conquered players for November 11th, February 17th of 2019, April 28th of 2019, and May 5th of 2019, 51 Walden Street Theater. We also have, I guess we need to get approval of that.
Okay, and what's to approve the consent agenda, Greg?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now we also have executive session minutes of August 13th of 2018. We have a motion to accept those.
Move to approve the executive session minutes of August 13th, 2018, not to be released.
Settle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Construction will start on Cambridge Turnpike project next week after Labor Day, starting with the utility installation. Phase one is the area from Lexington Road to Millbrook. And phase two will be outposts across these corners. So there will be some construction activity happening on Cambridge Turnpike next week. Kaiser Road parking lot is under construction. The west side is now being built and has been graded and will be paved this week. By, of course, the work, we're hoping to get the work on the east side close to the Millbrook done before Labor Day, but it was like it's going to be a half a week. So we have to have that moved into Kaiser Road. Continuing to get complaints about Verizon service, but I understand they are coming in on September 24th. They talk about potential other options for services directly related to that. Cool. Ag Day is this, excuse me, a week from Saturday, September 8th, 10:00 a.m. 13th Annual Ag Day, Farming Market on Main Street, which will be closed as it usually is. The Jerome land planning process tomorrow night at 5:30 on the site at 369 Commonwealth Avenue. The department staff, assistant town manager, and consultants will be there to discuss and hear from the public ideas on how they would like to see the Jerome land integrated into the town's park system and integrated into the existing conservation land that's there. It's supposed to be hot tomorrow, so if it is too hot to go out tomorrow, they're still going ahead with it, but there'll be a second opportunity on September 17th in the evening in the town, so it won't be your only chance. State primary election is Tuesday, September 4th. Polls will open at 7:00, close at 8:00. Absentee ballots are available at the town clerk's office until Friday, August 31st. That's an extended date due to the holiday, the Monday holiday. So until Friday, August 31st, it's an absentee ballot. There is a heat advisory that was issued by the National Weather Service, so we've encouraged anybody that has concerns about excessive heat to visit the libraries or Harvey Willock Center to get some relief. Expecting a possible peak electric demand day tomorrow around that 4 o'clock, so people are asked at that time in late afternoon on Tuesday to reduce consumption, if it's at all possible, to lower our peak. Reminder that Nego Pond is shut down and will be for the foreseeable future to avoid tripping the radar on the use of the service water supply. So we're relying on our groundwater wells, and there is a state of water supply conservation ordered by the Public Administration on July 20th, so it's still once a week water, even though we've had some bringing that's helped us. Folks are asked to, I don't know, they will help you with one day a week.
And that one day is the day that they've been trash collecting?
Yes, their neighborhood is served by the town's trash collection. Each day, so it's a strategy. Sudbury has let us know that they are intending to sell 48 acres of land that they acquired, we could use this property, that's on Wood 117. 46 acres, and 16 of those acres are being conquered. So there's a potential significant development on Wood 117. Sudbury immediately running our White Pond well. And the Select Board, Sudbury is likely to make a decision on September 19th. And lastly, the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day is September 19th. Here in Concord, we have a monthly in Lexington, but the one in Concord is the most popular. So it's 4:00 p.m. on September 19th.
Description drugs that can always be dropped off at the police station?
At the police station. There is a receptacle that gets emptied on a regular basis.
Any questions or comments? I will move to the chair's report. I want to update everyone regarding the status of the issue involving the new installed blue and the failure of the occupants of 15 Chase Road to comply with the condition of the Select Board order dated February 12th of 2018. And what seemed to be a reasonable resolution to a long existing neighborhood problem has still not been resolved, and it became necessary for the town to file a civil complaint in the Concord District Court. The defendants have filed a response, and I had anticipated it would be necessary to hold a hearing in the court. However, at about 4:30 this afternoon, I received an email with some photographs showing that perhaps the fence has been completed. And so we're going to need to get the, somebody from the police department to go do an inspection. If it passes, we will be dismissing the complaint, and hopefully the problem will have resolved itself. There hasn't been any contingent problem regarding behavior of the dog, but part of the order was the fencing. The town always would like to have disputes settled by working out an agreement with the opposing party or parties. Such agreements are usually less expensive, and each party accomplishes partial victory. But it's not always possible, as any agreement requires both parties to compromise. At the special town meeting on October 1st, there's going to warrant to accept an agreement with WR Grace involving funds for the taking of their property by eminent domain. The town earlier this year resolved a lawsuit involving the town of Acton regarding Nego Pond. The town currently is involved in a lawsuit involving access to Estabrook Wood. Concord's fortunate to have excellent counsel in all these matters, but competent counsel comes at a cost. There'll also be a warrant article regarding additional funding for the town's legal expenses. I urge town voters to become educated regarding the warrant article and to attend the special town meeting. I also urge you to spend some time to learn about the candidates running for elective office and to vote on September 4th for a number of contested races this year. You're fortunate to be able to select who will represent us in the various offices. And with that, we will move to the public hearing. I will accept the motion.
Sure, move to open the public hearing, and this is to discuss the change of the alternate manager, Paparazzi of Concord located at 766 Elm Street.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please come forward, and would identify yourself, tell us a little bit about what your plans are.
Okay. My name's Eric Sheen. I worked at Paparazzi Concord since 2011. Originally from Garner, growing up in Foxborough. This is the year in the youth, I'm an alternate manager of Paparazzi. I've been in the state of the quite a long time. I've been building the town very well.
And I know that there's been a query check and a safe serve alcohol training certificate you've come through. There's also corporate liquor service policy that I'm sure you're familiar with.
Yeah, of course.
And the Concord Police has completed a check and determined that there's nothing that would disqualify you from it. Any members have any questions?
Where were you before you worked Paparazzi?
I started working there when I was still in college at McGill University. So when I graduated from college, I went into first full-time serving, and then worked my way up to manager. Before then, I worked at Kansas Utaral in Sudbury while I was still in college.
And have you been working in the Concord locations since 2011 or worked in the?
Yeah, I worked at the Framingham and the Wausau locations for like short periods of time, but then Concord is majority of the time.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Does anybody in the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none?
I don't know. I can move to dispose the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So do we have any other discussion? It seems like a red flag.
An experience.
Police check them out.
We saw it pass towards everything, so I think no reason to delve any further.
Then I'm ready to make a motion.
Very good.
Move to approve Eric Andrew Sheen as alternate manager of record for Paparazzi for the Victoria of Concord doing business at Paparazzi located at 768 Elm Street.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
We now have the potential Main Street Historic District expansion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mark, you've exposed a whole large road leading into Glen, which is our area that historic district appears to be apparent. Basically, we are here to outline for you what our intent is to expand the Main Street Historic District. You know, it's been our goal for quite some time to make sure that we have done everything we can to preserve the historic nature of Concord. That's part of our charge, okay? And although the demolition bylaw is very effective to a certain degree, it's not a solution, particularly if we discovered last year. We were also pleased with the reaction that we got at town meeting last year when we were able to incorporate that one role into the historic district. So what I'd like to show you this evening is a presentation that our senior planner had a terrific job on this. She really helped us last year put together the saving device on Sudbury Road and do what she did as a player for this, and good execution of it. So she's been terrific at that. We have the presentation on file, and I'd kind of like to go through it, if that's okay?
One sec.
And what I want to start, if that's okay, is the back end of it, the last page, which shows us a map. And basically, what we're looking to do is expand the Main Street Historic District, okay? To incorporate the first, I don't know, maybe already.
Yeah.
I didn't make copies for everybody, because I think it's more effective to show it to you rather than let you get ahead of it. You know, there's some structures on Sudbury Road that really need to be, you know, incorporated into the district, okay? And although, as I said earlier, the demolition of the bylaw can be effective, it isn't a solution. And if we looked at it, we wanted to incorporate an area without being too aggressive about how we did it, because we thought if we could pick off the right spots, okay? And our intent is, as you'll see, is to sort of lay this out to the people who live in those homes and ask them what their opinion is, okay? And if they know predisposition about how to go forward after that, if they come back and say, well, timeout with a likeness, then you know, then all bets are off, okay? Maybe.
Just for your information, we have been provided a copy of the letter, the list of the addresses that were identified, and the frequently asked questions. So that's been very helpful.
Okay, and that's pretty much what I was going to show you this evening?
Right, but I think for the public, it's helpful.
That's okay. If we can get our activity. Don't get too. Well, I have the presentation. You can certainly look at it and my thinking. So. You have a copy of the map, okay? And what it shows is how we intend to expand. Now, one of the things that, to me, actually, Marsha Rasmussen.
Can we go there?
Great, thank you. We showed this to Marsha Rasmussen, and she actually indicated that perhaps we should incorporate the Emerson umbrella building into it as well. I haven't, you know, if we could certainly do that, that's town-owned, so, you know, but we certainly, you know, I'd like to incorporate. And obviously, the key to this is the map shows the different ages. You know, a couple of those homes on Sudbury Road, if you know, are very old, okay? So what we're looking to do is expand the district from Main Street, which is a green up above, that's our name, and incorporate those homes into it, okay? So if you go to the page that shows all the homes. That's something. Oh, that's it. I don't know if you can read that, a little noisy, but what that does is that basically shows all the homes we're talking about, okay? And, you know, the date of their structures, okay? And so what our intention is, is, okay, we'll go to page one. Is on, is on, no, page one. Keep going. Page one. Is there an option, page one? No, it's a page one. That's, it comes out under me a signature that we expect to send out on September 10th, with your approval, obviously. All of those homes outlining what our intention is, give a little bit of a description about what our charges are and why we think it's, you know, a good thing for them to participate in, if you will, okay? So it's two pages to that, solid idea, okay? It sort of explains what we're trying to accomplish. And then along with that, there is sort of some frequently asked questions about the historic district, which sort of, you know, reiterates what our charge is and all that stuff, okay? And then keep going. And then along with it, there is a survey that we're going to send out that asks them questions about whether they'd like to participate in or not, okay? What their thoughts are, and try to get some input. And whether they would be willing to, you know, our next steps would be to have an open forum probably at the library sometime in October. If we get any responses from you. If we don't get any responses from this, all bets are off, okay? Does that make sense? Now, she's also set up a website already that is key to this, so people can go to the website and see what we're doing or answer these questions on the website as well. So it's our intention to send this out. Right after Labor Day, the letter is dated the 10th of September, as you probably saw. Hopefully, get some responses back by the 29th, and get some responses back by the 29th of September, so we're able to live on that date. Then if we have some sort of a public meeting in October, get some input further. Because if you know, if we're going to do this, we have to have the warrant article written and written throughout, like being able to force or something like that. So is that all we can? So that's our plan, okay? And we obviously didn't want to do anything without, just like, you know, sort of buying into it, if you will, and welcome your comments. I'd like your comments about Emerson umbrella, if you think that should be incorporated. I hadn't looked at the structure, the data, and stuff, to see if it should be, okay? My concern with that is if we include that, then does that help people cross the street, maybe, that they are susceptible to being incorporated, you know? One of the things that we have to be careful about is that we don't want to let people feel like we're forcing them to not be able to do what they want to do with their own laws. We're firm believers in that, okay? And, you know, that's a concern. That question or comment?
So I think, I appreciate the approach you're taking here. I think it's good to get the input of the public. I'm a little unsure as to what, how many houses are affected by this? Do you remember how many are on the list?
Well, I don't know. It was probably, I didn't count.
Thirty.
Twenty-five or so, something like that, is my guess.
So what you said was if folks aren't interested in it, then it's kind of a nonstarter.
I think we need to see what kind of input we get back from, okay? I don't want to go to that point and say, well, we get 50%, then we go forward, you know?
Well, that's what.
I think we need to see what the reaction is.
I think that's fine. I would just say it a little differently, because what you said was if we don't get positive input or something that will affect, it's a nonstarter. I think better language is we're going to hear from the neighbors. And after we heard from the neighbors and the public, then we'll be making, hopefully, a good decision. Because I don't want to get.
A lot of politics.
No, no, I just don't want it to be, well, 10 people said it was not a good idea and so.
Right, that is, that is our intent, okay? We want to see what kind of reaction we get, okay?
So just because we're recording, people may be listening to it. So what, if I'm the homeowner in this area, what is the major impact a decision like this would have on my abilities outside of the demolition?
The law. The law. And you know what our charter is? Our charter is to approve subjectivapopulism for any changes that are visible from the public way, okay? So basically, if somebody wants to put an addition on, or they want to change the color of their homes and things like that, then they have to come before us. And file an application, it's a public hearing, where they explain what they want to do. The public gets a chance to comment on it, and you move forward. Okay, okay. I mean, you know, we're fairly comfortable with our process, okay?
So if the library was part of the Historic District, would they be able to do their expansion?
The library is part of the Historic District, and they have come in for us to get approval for their expansion, okay?
So there's some flexibility in terms of modernizing.
Oh, yeah, no, it is, if there's no question about it, then it isn't our intent that everything has to look like a 1750 house, not at all, okay? I mean, you know.
And you probably, as an example, the museum, the new barn at the museum is a modern building. The science building at Concord Academy is a very modern building. So just because it's an historic district, doesn't mean we can't have a modern building. It doesn't, you know, it needs to be reviewed and be tasteful and appropriate for the, the neighborhood.
And the streetscape, the streetscape.
Although I do recall that one of the often requested alterations for property is the installation of solar panels. And that's a very large neighborhood. I don't know, I know there are already solar panels on a number of homes that might now be incorporated in the district in this drive. How does that influence?
It's a good point, Alice, because for the most part, we have not let people put solar panels on the front of homes, okay? That are exposed to the street, okay? We've had, I know one occasion where we, oh, the homeowner, they couldn't do it, okay? We've had others where we've allowed it to happen, okay? You know, it's one on one, the street that you could see, but it was set for that, okay? You know, Jack Kimer's house, he put some on, okay? And they're sort of visible, but they're not in the face of the.
And certainly, solar panels that are already on the home would be brown collar. You know, I think it's already begun, it's, you know.
I also think, Alice, solar panels, I'm sorry, I mean, you're not going to move forward in a little bit better fashion. I think, you know, they're evolving, and I don't think they're going to play with uglies and big cats, I think. You know, they make great advances with that. We had one where an architect wanted to put solar panels on the garage, and they were actually going to look like shingles. We had the folks from Concord Academy did a thing, and we saw it about Historic District environmentally friendly thing, okay? And I turned it on, like, you know, and they put this whole presentation together, a classed, and they talked about how Tesla is developing the shingles, which will be solar panels, but will look like shingles.
They have them all ready.
They have them set.
So I think, I think they're going to make advances with, then it will be, it's on the side.
So one of the questions I was going to ask is, the houses that are indicated on this slide here, does that represent every structure in that area?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
There's 51 listed, is that?
Yeah, I didn't count the rest. When you can see, it's all of those.
And are there any, I doubt it, but are there any vacant buildable lots in there?
Yes, there's one. There was a demolition.
That was during that.
Sudbury Road, but you can see it's one that's got all the costs.
So this looks like they're looking at your list, some 50 homes that would be expanded into the district, and all together in the district? How is that, that the road district is now, I mean, Hubbard Street, Main Street, Hubbard?
Yeah, Hubbard.
Is that the same district? The Hubbard Street, or no?
No, no, no.
Different district.
Different district. It's Barrick, no, Farm District, it's the one in the street district, okay? There's the Martin Mile District, there's the Main Street District, okay?
I should know that.
There is a Turm Street District, which has just had a couple of buildings over there, and then there's the Hubbard.
But this would be an addition to the Main Street?
But it would be an addition, we're not going to establish a new district. And I'm told that it's easier for us, the law and such, that it's easier for us to expand the district than just to establish a new district. That's the one. Any other thoughts other than on burden?
I know we did get a letter, and I see she's here, so I'm sure that the public will have a comment on this. My only comment, I bet you so many people didn't realize you're living in somebody else's home. The names of everybody's house, I thought was interesting.
Well, I think, I think even if, even if you were my favorite, I think it would be a wise thing to do to go forward with the plan that you articulated.
Right.
Have, have the input from the folks in the neighborhood and have the public have a chance to weigh in. So if you're asking our view about that, I think I would certainly support that. And we'll see, see what kind of information we get back. I also like it in the sense of, you know, not, like I've seen before, and I'm not going to be able to give you good information, but sort of defining a house all of a sudden as part of the Historic District. And I've seen that a couple of times over the last few years. I, I, that's a little tricky for me. I'd much rather have some understanding of what constitutes a Historic District, get it well defined, and, you know, take it to the public and find out if you're interested. I don't know what's the process for having municipal building included?
I think they asked the Select Board if you wanted to have it included. Which you did with the Harvey Willock Youth Center, so the church street. The library trustees did not want the West Concord Branch Library included in its design. And that was going to be my question, is the practice, I think, has been to require the property owners to volunteer to be included. Is that, is that my correct?
Well, when it started in 62, you know, before I was involved, or when it was first started, that really was the definition of it, okay? And only those people that said, I agree to be in it, were put into it. And I don't know if it was done because they didn't want, right? You know, they wanted to go through, I suspect that's more than anything. Like the Gray House over in Hubbardville, that was not included at that point in time because the owners didn't want to be part of it, okay? But I hate the idea of, you know, we talked about picking lots and saying, okay, you know, 69 Sudbury Roads in, but 73 isn't or something like that. So let's wait and see what happens.
So what do you need in terms of the number of new homes being proposed for the district? Do you need some number of them to approve for the district to be expanded, or do you?
No, what we need is for the, at town meeting, for the town, the voting public to say by two-thirds majority that they want to incorporate this in the Historic District.
Well, I thought there was a, I thought there was some decision. I'm recalling just a recent meeting in Gloucester when there's a new Historic District being proposed, and it requires 51% of the owners of the property to choose to be in the district for the district to be, this is to create, not to expand the district. So there's no requirement like that in.
Not that I'm aware of, but I guess we'll find out pretty quickly if the public goes along, okay? But obviously, if we have a majority of the homeowners favored this, it would certainly make it more compelling at town meeting in April when we bring it before the town to vote. And that really has to watch to articulate our position such that the homeowners seize and wail.
I thought both the letter and the frequently asked questions were excellent. Yeah.
Yeah. We're ahead of schedule. That's Heather's job.
And we certainly have to sign about her. Would it change the condition of the lease on the ground, or would it put another, something?
I do want to ask the opinion of the, the lessee, who are the folks that we require under the lease, them to make a necessary appearance. So I think we probably have an opinion.
But they'd be injured. You said if you thought about perjury?
They're, they're, Emerson and Earl leases the building from the town for a dollar and they're expected to make all capital improvements, so exterior, interior, it's all.
And they're in the process of expanding that.
I think the process will lay down with a good one. Just solicit feedback and input. I think having a survey monkey would be cool to use.
Thank you.
It's easy to get input. How, how well attended was your session last week at the HPC? Did you have a public session on your proposal?
That was, that was just a discussion.
Oh, just a discussion.
We, we will vote on it if our meeting on next day's, the condition of that for, for endorsement, it will be official and then after that it will be discussed.
See, I know there is somebody who wants to make a comment, so thank you very much.
You, you want to read that letter?
I think that the person.
And she's here, I think we can just hear directly.
If she, if she can come up and then you all can, yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
You can see that.
Yeah, you don't. Yep, kind of gave us sixty two questions. I came because I had one general proposal to add, um, which is, um, this is not, uh, only an issue that concerns the owners of these properties. Therefore, uh, we need, I would like you to consider in even the initial process, uh, not to limit questionnaires and consultations to the owners of the properties alone. Um, I can imagine that some of them would like the idea, others wouldn't for various reasons already discussed. But when we declare a certain neighborhood historic district, that, that affects the rest of Congress in terms of where certain projects and proposals end up happening, like, uh, like, you know, in the recent plans, this is in my letter, but it's not mine. Um, and there is, there are, uh, some encouragement for multifamily to be, or also developed projects for town center, as well as nearby areas, if we put it in the nearby areas, where we have natural resources and actually our own historic home. As such, as well, we're two veteran housing. Um, and, or, or recently, there was discussion about cell phone towers and that, or even parking meters. So there, a lot of the issues that protect the historic districts end up affecting the rest of the town. So, um, on the other hand, of course, having a nice historic district helps all of the town. So, so just, just, I was just going to ask you to please involve all of the public, not only the property owners.
All of the public would be involved with town meeting.
To go to town meeting.
I, I understand, but as, as the gentleman noted, once the property owners, fifty one percent, or whatever, say yes, there is extra pressure, uh, to push it through. And it would be good to have people like me have a chance to speak up. Not everyone is necessarily following in the summer, you know, the agenda or whatever. It's, I think there should be an article in the public journal. I think there should be, uh, uh, you know, a wildly publicized public discussions about what in the initial stages before it goes to county.
Thank you.
I think what we're hearing in that comment is that whatever decisions are made in one place has a ripple effect elsewhere in the community. And I think that's, that's a big, how you're speaking to.
Jane, would you like to come forward?
Hi, Dean Goldsberry, eighteen thirty two Main Street. I just have, I think, a simple question. Is this an all or nothing kind of thing? So if you have people to live on Bellham Street and Middle Street and Academy Lane say, oh, we're wildly in, in favor of this, and the people on Sudbury Road, they're sort of like, no, only one or two wanted it. Would you re-carve this?
I, I don't think we've.
Just a question.
I don't think we've gotten to that point. Okay, we, we.
But you could.
We could.
You could redefine before you go to town meeting.
But it depends on what the, we have to get two thirds majority town meetings ready to be, so.
Anybody else like to make a comment, a question? Yes, uh, thank you very much for bringing it to our attention and bringing it early so that public can be aware of what potentially is in the process. Thank you. We are now the public-private partnership discussion. And we have, um, been provided in our documents, um, the proposal that was, uh, voted on, adopted on July tenth of two thousand seventeen. Uh, and we also have the, um, report of the, um, Public Private P three committee. And I think we're really, um, I guess, at the stage of trying to decide. Uh, certain things need to be accomplished by the town manager in terms of, um, listing and notifying. And so that, I think, is in the process of getting done. Uh, and then the other, uh, as far as we know, there are no, uh, as of this year, no new P threes that meet the, um, criteria.
Not going to.
Yeah. Anybody else aware of any that, um?
So there's no band purchase? That would not be considered a P three?
It's not a partnership, I don't think. What it was a purchase, when there's hopefully a gift.
So one of these, you know, goes a little beyond, you know, making sure the list is there, is creating a website. You know, having a public presence that people can go and look at and be able to track, um, you know, what's new, what's old, have we kept up with the ones that we currently have? So that's a little bit more involved, I know. Is that something that, Erin does? Who does website?
Erin is the website. So, um, and different staff members of Public Works, Hannah, travel to Public Works, who's able to update their pages.
But as far as ongoing P three, there would be the contact person.
For the website or for tracking the progress on the P three?
Just proposing whatever needs to go.
Just to.
In order to make it staff number.
And what would be your proposal in terms of, um, sort of how that would work and the timing of the thing?
So, as you know, there's two things that I haven't made much progress on. One is the twenty two, twenty nine Main Street grants, offer from the creative hall. And that, and this committee, this is summer, excuse other than. So, um, in my, I guess my proposal would be, I would think that within four to six weeks, I'd be able to come into compliance. But I have this much.
Yeah, we've got special town meeting, we have, uh, a lot of things going on. I know we've been putting together other town managers, um, job description. There's a lot.
So, I offer no excuse. It's not something that I consider unimportant to the same as twenty two, twenty nine, maybe that committee's probably frustrated. Progress in the last few months and expect it to do so over a quiet summer.
So I'm wondering whether, you know, we talked previously, we've had a two different meetings, whether we could help you if the P three committee were reconstituted to do some of the legwork. Is that, if you feel like the work that's in here, um, is something that a committee could hopefully achieve if the committee members are willing, I think we heard they might be. Helping with the design of a website, offering recommendations for what goes on the website. Um, maybe drafting, maybe it was already in this, on the report, what an MOU might include. As the, the guidelines of what should go into the MOU of any new MOU. Is that something we should even consider?
So, yeah, I think if the committee wants to offer, um, uh, you know, information like that or identify things that are particularly concerning, because some, um, public private partnerships are quiet and inert. Uh, and then they come alive from time to time, such as the Rotary Club, where they make information more involved in a specific project that they make away for a period of time. Um, so if the committee has particular things that they, they want to be sure the public has access to as well, and, uh, really in full support. Otherwise, I would just, you know, go through the things that I think are important based on.
It seems to me that the one that is sort of likely to, um, be active is the, the library.
Yes.
And there's quite a few different aspects to that in terms of archives and other aspects. And I guess the question then is, a reconstituted committee, um, the best way to go? Or should we wait until there's kind of a point when we need to sort of get people who have a particular, um, the expertise in, uh, library management, library construction? And then we do have, uh, the issue as well of the proposal of the building, um, committee that, um, I think we're still waiting to receive, um, information on from the finance committee that was suggested. And I, I guess what I'm concerned about is that I don't want to have too many hurdles for any project that is taking place. I, I don't want kind of bureaucracy to get built up, but I do think that, um, the committee did a lot of work. Appendix A does have the kind of proper context, uh, content for memorandum of understanding. And it's pretty well laid out. And whether they are the proper group to execute that or to ensure that that's kind of complied with or, um.
The town manager to, uh, empower most broad orders to be in touch with the chair of the P three committee. If he sets up or be, or hold construction.
The committee has been disbanded.
Yeah, disbanded, so they should.
Well, there is no.
But we don't, we, we don't, do we need to reconstitute, or would you suggest?
So I could be in touch with the former members and ask if they want.
That means going to the chair or something. You know, I think I want to wait until Chris has gotten into this and not to know where he's going to need some assistance, or isn't going to need it. I know the issue that's still, um, supportive as I am, and that still is bothersome to me is the list of public private partnerships. And once we, again, over the weekend to try to get ready for the next meeting for the life of me, I couldn't remember why some of these organizations that were on the list were there. So I'd like us to, you know, to, back through that. And I think, you know, even if there are some on there, as you indicated, Chris, are, are dormant, I mean, to get started with this, we ought to pick on, you know, the big and important ones that are complicated enough and have challenges for us and we want to make sure we're well. Of course, I'd rather have the top, you know, fifth out of that conference. And the top fifteen that he squared away and reviewed and make sure they're in compliance with what he has recommended.
Simple man.
Then, you know, worry about something that's, you know, not doing anything, couldn't put off, so.
We do have three members of the, um, previous committee who are here. I don't know, uh, as a group or sing individually, you'd like to address, uh, the board on this?
Your Gina's called, I should, Gina's come out. She's come any number of times to kind of tell us.
Get on it.
So, I mean, I don't, you know, as a town manager, I'm not yourself, but the town manager needs some help. I would just suggest to be in contact with the former chair. Assuming the former chair is willing.
I, I would be willing to help. I will say that there are former members who, who lately are not interested. There are some who probably would be interested. But I think that anyone who, who is interested would be looking for some clarity around what is it that, that's being asked. Um, so that, that people have a sense of whether they're able to deliver on that. And, um, and, you know, in a sense of, is that, you, you're talking about it being sort of pop-up committee here and there. That feels a little loose to me, like, is it or isn't it? And, and, or is it a short-term committee to get things rolling and then it gets turned over to the city? So I think there are some questions that people will have in order to be able to say, yeah, I'll, I'll sign on for that again. The committee did do a significant amount of work to, to get things where, where they got to. And I think for most of the members, if not all the members, that, that we've been a little disappointed. That's taken a while and, you know, so there we are. Now, a year later, or a year and a half later, depending on when the time of clock's starting. So, um, I'd say, you know, certainly if you want to be in touch with me, Chris, I'm happy to be in touch with the members and all the members and see who might be interested. But we would like certainly some clarity about what, what it is you, the select board, would be looking to us to, um, to be able to do.
The pop-up is pretty easy to understand. I think Chris gave a good example of it. The Rotary Club is not a public-private partnership. But every once in a while, I think, to conquer that, right? And all of a sudden, we have one. So that's putting that by pop-up. They're, they're circumstantially public-private partnerships, not all the time. So, you know, contrast that with the library, which is a similar one. So I think we want to get those things squared away and work on those big ones. And then, as we sort of learn how to do this, and then we can involve the others.
Yeah, and, and I realized that list that, that was part of our report was pretty extensive because we tried to be as thorough as we possibly can. And it's possible that there might even still be a couple out there that we, we didn't uncover.
I think there probably are, or likely, on my view, there are some on that list that I don't know.
Well, for, for all of those entities, we did have a reason why we put them on the list.
I said I couldn't remember.
Right.
I don't think you didn't have a good reason.
Well, I also know that, um, the committee felt that jurisdiction did not go so far as the school, uh, committee or school building. And there was kind of, uh, thinking that perhaps, um, there could be, um, the school itself could take on a similar type of a process and perhaps use the, uh, P three committee. And it strikes me that, from what I understand, one of the, um, uh, likely scenarios in the future is if there's going to be a middle school, uh, that's construction, which has implications for the P three. So, uh, I don't know with the status of that, whether, fortunately, one of our members was able to infiltrate the school committee and, uh, is here, so I'm sure we'll have a, a, a voice there. But I, I think one of the things that we kind of did not see, as the committee did not see, is that, um, the, these type of entities, the P threes, come and go and they kind of, at some point, they take a great deal of time and input and getting the memorandum of understanding. At other times, it may be quite a lot. And so the question is, uh, sort of what's the best process to have so that when something comes up, um, we can address? we can address it in the fashion that P three was recommending? But you don't want to have a committee that doesn't meet for two years.
Sure, sure.
I see we have another committee member who has.
Before Dory's piece of, so you believe that within four to six weeks, you could have something.
An update, what's required on the annual report to update things, what are currently active on P threes? I wouldn't post up there. We have the original report, which includes comprehensive list, and I would only post the things that are active. So I see that the Harrington House tenant is on here. We will have a new tenant. I don't think that's a P three. It certainly isn't one that I would report on in great detail because we have tenants.
And within the same time period, would you be able to come back to the board with specific concerns, issues, and questions that are not resolved? So that we would then be able to sort of take up the idea of, well, do we just call Jean? Or do we reconstitute, give some order of magnitude of what we're dealing with? And know whether it's just kind of having citizens help out? Or whether it's sufficiently, maybe we ought to get a small group back together and put them to work within that same time period?
Dory, you had it.
Yeah, my only thing is to say that I don't believe what we were recommending is just some sort of whole people. It's got a website that can help find us, just one word, one block of the visitors. That's got to be more than a sentence in house. That's one, it's public information. But I think one of the motivating forces, as I read it in the town government study committee, was to have this public, to get public information that when something is being contemplated as a partnership, as maybe it's started or expanded, that there be public notice for that, rather than having it sort of happen and, oh, by the way, this, well, we had some meetings on this. We feel, I think I'm speaking to the committee, that we wanted to have more daylight on what was going on with public-private partnerships. Some of them are innocuous, and some of them, as I said, run by the wayside. I think I might be completely correct. There are some major ones that it just, it needs to be, it's not just, oh, we're going to keep a record of what you've done. But we want to have public involvement. When I'm thinking, I'm a part of this partnership, I'm a private partner, and I have been doing something, to have there is sufficient public notice. And so I'm concerned about having a committee be doing this. If a committee was going to be so sick, you know, just clerical, that would be one thing. But I think there's more to this, and that's the part I would think to have forgotten. And that's the part that I would hope that you as a board would make a decision. Do you want that public, that kind of information? Or is that something that's just, you're saying, no, let's just not bother with that? I think until that's clarified, we can make all the lists we want.
Well, I think we do, Dory, and I think, you know, if I go back to, I think it was before the committee was constituted, although it could have been the same time. We had the library, Emerson Umbrella, and the Concord Museum all come here to tell us what their plans were and how they were going to go about their business. And I think Emerson Umbrella was invited about the second time or maybe. That was, I think, exactly what you were talking about, whether it was enough.
Well, I think maybe.
But I think that was exactly from the town government study committee
Yes.
trying to get to the public earlier in these processes. Because people were feeling like, what?
That's right, that's exactly what.
And it's already started to be built, and it's.
And I think the playing fields were one of the motivating forces to write in town government.
Yes, playing field and Junction Village was also a factor.
Well, that came late in the game.
Yeah.
That came late. I think the playing fields, and of course, the reality is that was at the high school. So this would not have any jurisdiction.
But the middle school will probably have the same thing. And so that would be, when the middle school, and we're talking about the C R O starting to pay their taxes, and now, then, that's the best idea. But if that happens, that's under the town, K H. And that might be a really good one, as an opening sort of thing, that we not just book, you know, well, there's an ex-rising middle school playing fields.
Well, but again, I know I'm being, but I don't see building the middle school as a public-private partnership.
No, 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 I'm talking about the playing fields.
The playing fields.
Private money for playing fields.
If, if.
Well, maybe it won't, wouldn't that?
Well, that's the point. I don't want this to get.
No, let's not, forget I said this. I don't want to have something born that's going to be blamed.
We haven't even decided, but it's going to be under the middle school.
No, I think also the committee sort of recommended one way to help this happen, which is that the at least annual public meeting where these P threes are reviewed and the status is, is shared with the public. And that was something that the committee recommended, that was something that you all put into your plans for P threes. So that's a one way, not the only way, but that's one way that can happen. If something comes up in between, then there needs to be another mechanism to get that information out. I'm sorry, Mike.
Well, I mean, I get why it could be.
Yeah.
You know, it could turn out to be a public-private partnership. I just don't know yet.
Lynn, did you have a question?
I was just going to comment that having read all the material myself, I think I'd like to give the town manager a chance to work with it because sometimes when you're working, you develop a framework as you go through these. And he's in a position to do that, so. That's my comment.
So first we'll talk in the next few weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the magic item, which is finalizing the special town meeting warrants, which have been provided.
So, yeah, we had a meeting with the chair, law time moderator, Carmen came back for that specific purpose, the town council, the finance director, to review the draft warrant that the board approved earlier. And we did make some significant changes, so I thought it would be beneficial to have the board review. I think on the imminent domain taking, the explanatory box was not self-explanatory. The moderator made that very clear. Particularly, it wasn't clear to her that what was happening was, we had one appropriation, we paid less than that amount for the land, and now we'll pay more than that amount. And we're adjusting additional funds. So I think that the box there is more clear than the document that you saw earlier. We've added maps. I don't think you saw those, the maps, missing the earlier version, I'm sure. We suggested that the map show the, because we're on article to concern the easement on W R race land, that the easement is shown, a little hard to read there, but it's dark. It connects to the acting land, and we suggested that we show the acting land so that the voters could see exactly what's happening, kind of in much the old of that. So that was an improvement. See, we made significant changes at the request of the White Palm Associates on Article four, particularly that they reconfigured the planning board recently, approved an A R, approved an acquired subdivision plan of the eighteen point one acres, and then reconfigured the lots so that the references have the references to the assessors parcels that have been deleted, and the references to the street addresses that have been deleted. And what remains is the parcel of lots A one, B two, C, and also X. We have left off X, which is the small triangular shape locked down by the water's edge. That's that parcel of X, which is locked, it's not the one, so unfortunately, that was caught. So, and we added a little bit more detail, White Palm, relative to White Palm, get. Let me see, we contemplated not having Article five, but we received word late today that it does look like it would be necessary to include Article five in the warrant, which is an appropriation of funds to the beach. Something else. It was requested by the moderator, I think, for clarification purposes for both the two regional high school articles, that in the box, it be clear, the last sentence that the debt issued on this article has not been excluded under the recent proposition to that. So the high school, the high school construction project was a debt, it was a debt exclusion. There was no, that exclusion for both of, for both of us, and management proposed. Black Birch, Article twelve, speaking ahead, we had substantial conversation on Article twelve, which is the Black Birch two site development, so the title has changed a little bit. There's a recording of the original units or what have you. And I think the test of the documents on the articles has also changed. And the explanatory box has been expanded to. So those are the, those are the major changes that have been discussed and that have proposed since we last saw them.
Can I just add one question? It's really education for me, I'm sure. On the Black Birch, Article twelve, it refers to conditions established by the Board of Appeals and approved by the select board, and I was wondering why.
So that project was approved, special permit granted by the Board of Appeals. It's not your forty B process, I believe. No, well, it's a notice, this is a special process, you need to do that.
That's right.
But the Board of Appeals was the permit grant authority. And now the proposal is to change that decision of the Board of Appeals and allow either the units or financial compensation. So that has to be approved.
Fine, Ben. Thank you.
Any other questions or? So you're ready for motion?
Yes, I would respectfully request the board vote to approve the October first special town meeting warrant, or thirteen articles substantially as submitted. Again, I'm believing the chair, the town council, and town manager, flexibility to make minor changes. It's headed to the printer tomorrow.
So move. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We're ready for the pay access television update. We have a document there.
So Kate Hodges, the Assistant Town Manager, prepared a memo for the board. So no longer looking backward relative to CCTV, but looking forward to Minuteman Media Network. M M N is the new, will be the new name of the in-house operation. And she has indicated, she's spoken with, I think, all three of the remaining CCTV staff and discussed continuing their employment. I think job offers have been made to two employees that were interested, and one, the third is thinking it over and over, I believe. They've all agreed to cooperate with the town in transitioning during this last month of CCTV's contract. And you can see job descriptions, so these employees will conform to our standard, you know, process of paying classification system. Not during the interim, during the transition, but eventually we're moving in the direction of having both positions included in the classification system and job descriptions.
So for the interim, interim period, do they just continue to be paid as they are currently being paid?
They would be town employees, so it will change a little, it will change a little bit. They will, they would not have, as temporary town employees, they don't have paid pay. So the hourly rate will be increased to reflect the fact that when they get a day off, they won't be paid for it. But they will have benefits, like our town employees.
And will they be given a job classification?
If that, yes, we're working on that, that will take some time.
Yes.
That would be to continue their employment after this transition.
And it could be the case that their salaries could change depending upon the classification.
And that's from your personnel committee?
The personnel board.
Another storage and archive was raised, and that was an issue that we wanted to make sure was clarified.
So we do have that. The investment was made just over in July, I think it was, they had run out of storage. So each meeting that was being recorded was not available. So we bought additional storage capacity and also the town's combination of those programs. There was a request to the Library Corporation to consider archiving the P programming, the public program that does not relate to education or governmental meetings. And I think that the corporation is thinking how, they would be really interested in archiving and publicly produced programs. My preference, I think, would be to keep it all together, so there's one spot where people can go through to get a program they want, but that would be something that the advisory committee can.
Well, it could be electronic play offs or something.
That's right. And I don't think they'll all, everything will be available for live streams. So there, for example, the town meeting in two thousand and two, somebody's interested in reviewing the discussion on a particular article, that it won't be, I don't think it'll be available for live streaming at all times. They may have to make a request to treat it, that will be made available. Because otherwise, you could be taking up a lot of space, having every meeting that was ever recorded available for streaming. So we'll probably be.
We're physically storing all of this stuff ourselves on our own servers?
I believe it's in the cloud.
But it's, it's just our?
So we've acquired the storage space, but they're not physically, I don't think they physically.
No, clearly physically aren't, but it's our storage space as opposed to a service that's storing it for us.
Anybody else have any questions about this? I wanted to make sure that we kind of follow up because I know there was a able concern, town taking over, and the League Women Voters raised, I think quite properly, issued the archiving and the storage information. So thank you and thank Kate for the very thorough, as you were able to even work in on the logo of the Old North Bridge. That's all that. And finalizing the town manager job description, that's been provided. I thought it was very thorough. I don't know if people have any comments or questions about the. That will be obviously useful for the town manager search committee to. And.
Did you want to vote to approve that?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to approve the job description of the town manager draft, I think on the century eight.
Second.
Any comments? So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Now we have the town manager goal and the evaluation. And that was provided, and I sent out quite late this afternoon, the proposed evaluation. So I don't know if people got that or.
I had a chance to review it. I made the editorials, so nothing substantive of this editorial. So I'd be happy to approve it simply to be able to make minor.
But you didn't get a chance to look at it, so.
I did get your side.
Then I think it may be something we can fairly quickly handle the next meeting.
Are there highlights that we should discuss that will be here? What do you think, oh, I think.
What the highlights to you might not be.
It's true.
I don't know. I think perhaps the best way, rather than trying to go through it, we can put it off. And I don't think it's going to affect anything by delaying a couple of weeks. And I thought the goals, again, we can incorporate both of them.
I also sent those out, I believe. They intended to mirror the board's goals, but they lacked some more specificity.
Yeah.
So what I didn't notice in the goals, perhaps you have seen the goals, but I didn't see, I'm sorry. Was it yours, that's coming just before that? What I don't see in here that may be off today is some mention of the. Is it, is it? It sounds like something you're going to work on, that we have a similar urgency by some that we. It sounds like, Sophie, you're going to work on, that we have a similar, um, urgency by some that we do that, it may be here, but it.
No, I made it accidentally. Intentionally, um, this place, this was under your group, the first group of effective plans, I think. Didn't have it.
Okay.
Ready for public comments? I think we've driven most of the public away, it looks, uh, I don't see any public comments, so we're ready to move to the committee liaison reports. Linda, would you like to begin?
Sure, um, I attended the, um, to do nine Main Street Committee, there is a new EPA representative that's in the sign, um, Chris Smith, and he also will be handling, uh, the great, uh, the great chocolate. Um, they, um, they're continuing to, um, pump and clean the water, and they're seeing some results from that. Um, the former EPA, uh, representative, uh, her name was Elaine, I don't remember her.
Sally.
Sally, thank you, um, suggested that, um, that the consent decree negotiations for the statewide remediation, um, are coming to a close, and she suggested there'd be a meeting, uh, when that happens, and they're expecting sometime early fall, that's the latest. Um, you know, having states go, but that's, that was the information there. Um, so consequently, the, the committee has confirmed about, um, one, um, being able to have a seat at the table, um, as, um, the design elements get, um, pulled out, and that there would be a possibility of some, um, infrastructure being taken care of by the design, such as roads and, um, different things before we might proceed and take over with an, a, um. Um, so there, there was some benefit to us being at the table fairly early in the process. So I think that the point of contact and what's going to happen is all, um, may necessitate us then getting on board and moving. Um, the other committee I attended was the Tucker Housing Development Corporation, they had a full agenda. Um, they talked about the community forum for the rural land, um, and, um, they have awarded three small grants for home improvements, um, for people who apply for that assistance, and, um, they were also, um, had some questions about the status of the committee for the open space task force related to Junction Village.
Remind me where we are.
Who's agreeing it would be a committee and we have.
The Junction Village open space task force, there's one person has been appointed to that. Have green cards for anybody else? No.
So this is a good time to ask a quick.
Yeah, it's a short-term committee, I think the intent was, you know, four to six months or something like that, just long enough to come up with a plan for the open space at Junction Village. Um, I think it was suggested that some representatives of different committees, you know, be appointed, so maybe that some of the committee votes would sort of help.
Get on, so we don't fall behind on it, and it makes sense to have somebody from the NRC as a representative.
Right, right.
Certainly, we should be involved in that, uh, somebody to come in, you know, to make the charge.
So there were, yeah, um, Chris's relatively correct, I think they were specified, uh.
Representatives.
So it's a representative, we can.
And then only one citizen at large volunteered, so we need one or two more.
So we, so we need the committee.
Think we could approve the committee charge, whether the leaders were going to be.
Looking at.
Yeah, I have the charge, there are definitely committee reps that were specified in it.
I'm supposed to be the liaison to that, as I seem to remember, can I be charged with responsibility of contacting the committee chairs? We're supposed to be volunteering somebody so you can.
And we'll be having a table of the act, uh, well, that might be a time to see if we can generate some excitement.
I, uh, I attended the Pollinator Help to Buy Committee, they, uh, continue to make progress on their mission, and they're going to also have a table of Ag Days, um, be handing out, uh, some material that I volunteer to print for them, so, uh, about the kinds of plants people should have in their yards and stuff, and something about that. We are going to have a table as well, Andrew has secured an tent for us, right?
Yep.
Tent table.
Tent and table, and I will have facilities pick it up, uh, Friday before the event, bring it here to the townhouse, and it's good to go, we should bring it right across the street.
So we just flip it over.
Yeah, I think last year the tent barely fit into someone's car, and it was kind of an ordeal, so we'll have the van bring it over here, ready to go, to the table. No one brings some chair, I guess, but we'll have a board, a sandwich board, like we did last year, and also I'm working with Heather Butler to get a list that we can have public vacancies where we.
Got some green cards?
Yep, and, you know, with the Junction Village open space, um, task force, now the committee's out there, we set, uh, one, yeah.
So in addition to Pollinator, it's not a committee that I'm not with, the Town Clerk and the Town Information Officer, to make progress on this fall's educational program that we're going to do. And, uh, we're going, we're going to have two, one in October, I'll provide the details for the most, I think it's October twentieth. But, and that's going to be, uh, sort of three parts, uh, from ten to twelve, you know, in the townhouse. Um, it's going to be, uh, like Carrie is going to do a review of the updates of the open meeting and public records law. Uh, the town moderator, Colin, is going to provide a overview summary of last year's educational programs, sort of on the road to town meeting. But the focus of that, the focus of only the last year was both for committed people and for citizens who might be interested. This one in October is just for committees, to help them understand what their responsibilities and duties are. And then third session that Tom is going to chair, which is sort of meeting management. So now we'll get that done, and then the one in November is going to be sort of helping petitioners who are interested, and petitioners of how they're prepared to get there. Uh, and we don't have the, just, I mean, we don't have the folks who are going to exactly do that, that's correct.
I attended the, uh, Joint School Committee meeting this morning, um, they voted, uh, to approve the Warren Article for the Carlisle Special Town Meeting, and then they also had a lively discussion, uh, there's been a candidate who wishes to, uh, hold a rally at the high school. And, uh, so the question was kind of policy regarding that, uh, the school would get grant in the, uh, candidate would pay for extra police and whatever detail. Uh, it would be on, um, September eighth, which is the same day that the, uh, Ag Day, so the police will be perhaps, uh.
Oh, they're about to, they're going to take over.
Yeah.
So, um, there's some details to work out, um, but, uh, they basically focused on, would it have any effect on the education? If you didn't know, public safety they thought could, um, uh, be provided, and, uh, the third was, uh, the issue of does it set, uh, an improper precedent, or they want to be cautious that, um, I don't know what standards it will be. Um, but I think they, um, uh, they had a lively discussion, and though I think we're voting, um, at their next meeting, uh, whether to, to go ahead and approve it.
Is this the candidate of the caucus?
Yes.
After the poll?
Yes. It's one where there may be other parties.
Exactly. I'm slow.
And, um, there was a discussion that, uh, any fundraising or whatever is illegal, so there would not be any of that. But the, uh, uh, proposed candidate who is, uh, seeking to do the rental is well aware of, of illegal operations, so.
Though it was, and, uh, it was an interesting, uh, discussion.
Um, so I attended the CSAT meeting and wanted to at least mention two things, one is on September fifteenth, um, there is a, the EV event, electric vehicle event that'll be held at, uh, at Woburn Pond, at the underneath the canopy, the solar canopy, but there are also electric chargers. There, this is an opportunity for people to come, look at the assortment of electric vehicles, they can go test drive them, there'll be a number of, uh, representatives and car dealers, um, who will be showing off their EVs, and you'll have, you'll be able to talk to other folks who own an EV, um, about what it's like to charge in comfort, where it takes to put something, a charging station in at your home, and you have the opportunity to get a test drive and see what it's like on the inside of an electric vehicle. And the town isn't now a new owner of an electric vehicle.
It's only.
Yeah, we have a new, it's a hundred percent electric charging, uh, there'll be a charging station put in here. At the townhouse. Uh, and the car is well branded, it has the sustainability logo, it says it's a zero emissions vehicle.
The, uh, I think, I don't know if the CSAT that sponsored it, a year ago or two years ago when we got the electric bus.
Yeah.
But they had an event over, all, and with the bus, and then there were all kinds of electric, everybody's known to electric cars.
Yeah.
Bunch of electric cars, for folks to look at.
So this is a remake, Brian Foles, who brought the first one, is doing it again, he's listed the CSAT to be his support team. Takes a lot of people to pull up the event, and we know from doing the, the swap day. Um, the other thing that a lot of projects have made is, uh, during this special offering of the heat swap program, which was, um, trying to encourage people to move off of fossil fuels and to, um, install a heat pump system. And I think they met their goal on installation, and even, they had two different kinds, ground source and air source. The ground source meant its, uh, its goal, the air source fell a little short, they're going to keep on plugging, uh, to see if they can continue getting people to sign up to installing air source heat pumps. Um, and they changed the incentive program a little bit, they learned from the program that the amount of the incentive is less important than actually selling the concept. And so people who seem to be willing to put them in, and then, uh, with or without an incentive, so they may look at reducing the amount of the incentive and allow that money to be put back into CMLP's corporate spend on, um, helping to defray the cost for, go to our income eligible on the small radius to support of green, um, fuels. That's my beautiful.
Now move to miscellaneous correspondence. I believe we got something regarding, um, APA award, Invision Conquer Plan, uh, asking that we, um, going to provide a letter of support for, um, a, an award of Daniel Burnham Award for comprehensive plan. And, um, I think it may be a good idea, but I don't know what other people thought.
So when I, uh, in, in general, I think it's a good idea, but when I read through, um, their requirements, and sort of, uh, and, also I keep talking about the criteria in the general way, indirect way, um, they talked about the benefit to the citizens. And I was wondering if we're premature applying for it now as opposed to next year, that was my question.
So much of, much of what they, it talks about is the process.
Aye.
Being with a public engagement process that has gone through, how you set priorities, with how you book, uh, across sectors to break down some of those silos in the thinking, and I think that maybe that's what they're more looking at, the engagement side, not the outcome, which obviously comes a guide, uh, Invision Conquer becomes a guiding, that, guy who's stuck in it for October, a ten-year timeframe. But I think when I looked through this, it affected us about more here towards how we came to develop the plan and the capital, it's approved.
I think it's a good idea, but I do have a process, uh, issue, and the process issue is if we're going to vote on something, I don't think we're going to, then I think that it ought to be a list of this, we can, uh, rather than do.
How is the call answered?
It's corresponded, but somebody couldn't, I can't, I can't imagine this issue, that somebody would object to it, but I wouldn't say it on the agenda. In the future, I would just suggest that any town that want to have a vote, that do not deal with it.
I think probably the problem, you know, this came in.
Oh, yeah.
This afternoon.
Just came in the last minute.
So.
After the agenda, the article been distributed.
Yeah, uh, but I, in principle, I think you're entirely correct. Should we though, um, vote to, um, authorize, um.
Yep.
A letter on my signature to, um, go out, and I guess it does require a ninety-five dollar fee. So, well, that comes with it as well.
Sure I can do that.
I, I thought that was clerk's deal.
I moved authorize the chair to submit a letter of support for the Daniel Burnham Award, uh, for a comprehensive plan on behalf of this one.
Any further conversation regarding it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Um, now we have committee nominations.
I do. I just found the right color paper. Um, let's see, committee nominations, I'm moved to nominate Lucy Rossborough of Fifty-Six Elm Street to the Hugh Cargo Trust Committee, Ruth Lauer of One Hundred Prime Road, number three twenty-three, to the Peg Access Advisory Committee.
So. Do, uh.
We're done, do you say?
No, uh, we need that, and it looks like we don't have any appointments, uh, committee appointments, but we do have appointing election officials. Uh, there is a August twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, update number two. Um. We would, um.
Yes, sir.
At the moment, too.
Yeah, okay, move to appoint election officials, it's listed on the town's, uh, memo dated August twenty-seventh, this is twenty eighteen. There are a number of officers who are, are named, are trying to read the names or not.
We don't need to do that.
Then I will.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I guess now we would be, um, turning to executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining issues.
Uh, I've moved the adjourned to executive session to, to discuss the collective bargaining to the police union, and not to reconvene in open session. The executive session is needed to protect strategy discussions affecting litigation on the state of that.
This requires a roll call, Linda.
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Aye.